Good evening. It is six P M. And unless there are objections, I would like to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting for May twenty eighth to order. And we have a little technical. Are you feeling hearing feedback in the back room? All right, we'll get this figured out. Um, Councilmember Harris, will you lead us in the invocation and pledge?
All rise. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Chief Carlson, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. It's my privilege to recognize two of our outstanding employees for the officer and employee of the first quarter. At first, I'd like to call up Detective Eric Haveland. Over the course of five months, Detective Haveland worked diligently to develop a solid case against a known drug dealer responsible for several overdoses in the metro Atlanta area. During the first quarter of twenty twenty four, Detective Haveland ultimately secured a felony murder warrant on this suspect. In August twenty twenty three, Dunwoody Patrol and Detective Haveland responded to the overdose death of a thirty-four-year-old Dunwoody resident. Detective Haveland observed evidence of narcotics on the scene and took control of the victim's phone to identify the source of the narcotics. The search warrant was obtained for the phone, and once the download was completed, there were photographs and communications connected with the purchase of narcotics. Detective Haveland continued working the case over several months and was able to obtain GPS tracking information from a company vehicle the victim used. Identify a potential seller and location of operations, obtain additional warrants, and partner with Gwinnett County Police, who had arrested the suspect on unrelated drug charges. Because of the meticulous efforts provided by Detective Haveland, he was able to remove a dangerous drug dealer from the streets and provide some closure for the parents of this overdose victim. And with recent events, this is very, we take this very seriously. And Detective Haveland is to be commended for the amount of hard work he did in solving this case. So at this time, I'd like to present the officer of the first quarter, Eric Haveland. Okay, next I would like to call up crime scene technician Sybil Fisher. I'm sure you are very familiar with Sybil. She is one of the originals from from the beginning, but she does an outstanding job every day. C S T Sybil has consistently demonstrated exceptional professionalism and commitment, which considerably contributes towards our agency's success. She has been instrumental in fostering a spirit of teamwork and collaboration within the department. She has maintained a positive and motivating presence in our workplace, and her upbeat attitude has profoundly impacted her colleagues, promoting a positive work atmosphere and camaraderie. Sybil consistently displays outstanding initiative and flexibility within her role. During the first quarter of twenty twenty four, Sybil has volunteered consistently to step in and help her fellow coworkers as needed to ensure coverage. She has adjusted her schedule to meet the demands of unexpected challenges, all while maintaining her high standard of work. Sybil consistently demonstrates a remarkable willingness to extend her efforts beyond regular duties. Her flexibility and readiness to take on varied tasks, such as organizing the quartermaster room, handling open records requests, providing agency tours, or assisting with property and evidence significantly contributes toward our overall success. Her daily proactive approach enhances her own personal growth, as well as sets a commendable example to her peers. Her contributions have enhanced our department's capabilities and significantly uplifts our workplace environment. I'd like to congratulate Sybil as the employee of the first quarter.
Uh, thank you, Chief Carlson, and uh, thank you Detective Haveland and Sybil um, for all the hard work you do for the city and serving our citizens. I'd like to take just a moment to add a little bit uh, to to Sybil. She helped me out personally uh, earlier uh, this year. Um, we had a group from Dunwoody Baptist Church that wanted a tourist city hall. And so um, so Sybil helped out, and when I say helped out, she basically did the whole tour. Uh, you know, ninety percent of this of the tourist city hall is the police. She did an outstanding job. People were, the reviews were glowing. Everyone could not stop talking about you afterwards. So thank you, and that's just one of many examples of all the great things you do for the city. So thank you. Okay, we have a proclamation, Jessica. Oh, I'm sorry. It's public comment time. Um, you will have up to three minutes uh, to speak. Uh, if you would like to speak, we ask that you please fill out one of these cards or in the back of the room uh, and hand it to either Sharon or Jessica. I do have one card here.
Hello, City Council. My name is Ally. I've come to you today to talk to you a little bit about Wildcat Park. So just a quality of life improvement idea I just want to tell you about. Um, Wildcat Park, from my understanding, is located, I think, at the old Austin Elementary somewhere on Roberts Road. Uh, nevertheless, it's it's a great piece of land, fantastic location. And as someone who referees soccer on Monday, plays kickball on Tuesday, play soccer on Wednesday, bocce on Thursday, I can tell you from just my interactions with the public that it would have a lot of demand. Uh, located ironically near Rush Union and Brook Run Park, you've got a lot of youth demand that could easily use as fields. Work, uh, playing soccer on Wednesday nights, there's definitely a field issue, a capacity issue. There's a lot of people that come after the, after the organized sports come and try to play on that field, um, just kind of have some fun with different sports. Hammond Park is generally booked up really badly. There's a lot of people again that come into Hammond Park. Um, there's a capacity issue at Hammond Park. Uh, I referee soccer at Dunwoody Springs, which is right in Sandy Springs, and interestingly enough, sometimes after the nine thirty, ten thirty games, you will actually have a group of people, I think the ADSL Soccer League, come and practice at ten thirty. So I know that area can definitely be used um, by multiple sports, multiple people, youth, adult. It would be a great way to develop. From my understanding, there was an idea or a proposal on the table for um, twelve billion dollars, or as I like to say, twenty-four equal payments of a half a million dollars each um, for a development in that area. And I would like to ask City Council to kind of think about it, review it, see if there's an opportunity for us to develop that area. I think as citizens, we would probably enjoy it. I think, like I said, there's going to be a lot of demand, a lot of usage. I think that would be a good use of taxpayer money. If it is possible, if you can find the money, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and that is the only card I have. Were there any other public comment? Just a reminder, we do have an additional public comment period at the end of the meeting. Okay, now Jessica, you have a proclamation.
Proclamation and recognition of Municipal Court Clerks Week, June tenth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Whereas municipal court clerks play a significant role in ensuring that municipal courts preserve public safety and promote quality of life in the city of Dunwoody and local municipalities across the state. And whereas the procedures for the Dunwoody Municipal Court operations are set forth by the Uniform Rules Municipal Court and other laws of the state of Georgia. And whereas more people come in contact with municipal court clerks than all other city services combined, and public impression of the DeKalb County judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. And whereas municipal court clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, renewing rendering equal service to all. And whereas the Dunwoody Municipal Court is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us. Municipal court clerks act in a manner that promotes public public confidence and integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments and significant role of municipal court clerks play in preserving the public confidence, integrity, and impartiality of the judiciary. Now therefore, Mayor of the city of Dunwoody do recognize this, the week of June tenth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty four, as Municipal Court Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal court clerks and court clerk Melondra Huntington and all municipal court clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they used to represent and serve.
Thank you, Jessica. Uh, Melondra, would you like to step up and say a few words?
Um, I appreciate the city recognizing us um, in the week of June tenth through the fourteenth as Municipal Court Clerks Week. And I also like to recognize my two deputy clerks, Ms. Andrews and Ms. Bowers, for five years of service to the city of Dunwoody as well.
Thank you, tourist clerks. They do very important work for the city and they do a great job. Consent agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by John, second by Rob. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes unanimously. Next up, business items. Item five.
Item number five is approval of a lighting service agreement with Georgia Power for the vermic path, Michael Smith.
Uh, so at the last council meeting, um, we discussed this agreement, and there were several questions that came up about lighting. Uh, what our standards are, some lighting questions in general. So I put together a few visuals to hopefully address a lot of those questions. First of all, there's different types of lighting. There's what we call along roadways. There's roadway lighting, which uh, the, the picture on the left here shows just a typical roadway lighting where the main purpose of the lights is to light the roadway. And this example, the sidewalk is right next to the roadway and the lights are behind the sidewalk, so it also lights the sidewalk too. So it so serves a dual purpose. The other picture here is actually a vermic road as it is today, where the first section of path is finished. And you can see there are streetlights on that road, but um, they're they're pretty widely spaced. They do provide some light to the roadway, but there's really no light on the sidewalk or the path that's there. Uh, the the light you see in the picture is really just the flash of the camera. So in situations like that, where the the road, the lights are actually hanging out over the roadway, they're not really lighting the sidewalk. Then you get into pedestrian lighting. Uh, and there was a question that came up last week about, you know, can the can the lights be shorter, or you know, what height do they have to be? The the picture on the left here shows what I call bollard lighting. It's shorter lights. These are really meant to uh, light the actual walk's surface uh, so you don't trip and fall really uh, for a safe, from a safety standpoint. You might see these on a walkway around somebody's house or around a hotel or some other type of commercial property where you're just really trying to light the pathway. Uh, but in the right of way, a lot of times, most of the time with pedestrians, they want some sense of security or uh, you know, feel comfortable walking in a, on a public right of way. They want to be able to see more uh, oncoming pedestrians. Uh, they want to see kind of the the sides of the sidewalk you see in the the, with the shorter lighting, there's some dark spaces even between the lights, and you really can't see anything off the walkway. And then when you, you know, if you introduce uh, bicycles onto a sidewalk with pedestrians, then you, you know, somebody riding a bike really can't see when they're riding down the sidewalk if they don't have some type of lighting higher up than these shorter lights. Um, so that's, that's why the the lights that we put in, we call the pedestrian lights, are taller, because you really want to be able to light higher than just the surface of the roadway. You want to be able to light people's faces and have people be able to see each other. So a few years ago, um, the community development and public works worked with an urban planner that was doing some other work for the city, and we came up with some streetlight standards um, to be used throughout the city. At the time, they took into account lighting that we already had in place, like on Dunwoody Village Parkway and around the CID uh, and the Georgetown Park to come up with a, a style that fit kind of the context of the city. So they specified a specific light pole, both for the roadway lights and pedestrian lights. Um, and then they they did an illustration shown here of how these lights might be laid out of, you know, with street trees and other street features of the street, and they used a typical spacing of sixty feet. That's not a hard and fast rule. That's more of just a general, uh, really as much for private development as that we don't want lights any close or any further apart than sixty feet. But on our pro, on city projects, we usually have a uh, designer that actually designs the lights for that specific location and the light levels we're trying to meet. So sixty feet is kind of a guideline, but it's not a, you you have to do this everywhere. It really depends on the light level level you're trying to achieve and what you're, what you're trying to accomplish. On the vermic project, um, there was, there's a couple of different standards that can be used for this, but what you're looking for is an average, a minimum average level of light. And then also not too much contrast between light and dark areas, because then you get the glare and you can't really see if there's too much difference between the lowest light and the the average light. So we, the first recommendation that was presented last meeting was based on one standard. We had gone with the sixty-foot spacing on the lights, which is typical with the the illustration here, and that resulted in twenty-one lights. We went, after hearing some of the concerns about it being a residential area, maybe being too much light, we went back and looked at it. We looked at the other standard and were able to come up with something that met the standard on about a seventy-foot spacing. So that would cut two to three lights. We don't have exact numbers because we weren't able to get a new design and a new agreement from Georgia Power in between meetings. But but we think it would cut two to three lights and cut the cost by ten, fifteen percent. And it will still provide the the light level that we think is appropriate for this area being a, a high-traffic area in front of the high school. You know, a walking route to the school and, you know, a lot of times of the year that they are going to school in the dark um, in the winter months. So uh, so we're recommending, after reviewing it again, a a light spacing of seventy feet. And oh, the other thing too is, we talked to Georgia Power and they, we, these will have a dimmable feature. So, you know, one suggestion might be uh, when people are less likely to be out using the sidewalk. So say after, you know, say eleven o'clock at night, uh, they could be dimmed to whatever level that we want. I would maybe suggest cut them to half, and cut them in half after eleven o'clock, and then they can go back up at, say, six in the morning or something like that. So they they are dimmable. Um, and I I I think that'd be a good feature to use at this location.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Are there any questions? John?
Thank you, Michael. I have a couple of questions. Um, what you have up on the screen, which which design are we doing now? We're doing the 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 photo. Show me which one we're using.
We're doing a wider spacing than this, and uh, at at vermic, the trees aren't going to be between the sidewalk and the road because of the parallel parking. So we have that little decorative stamped concrete for the people coming in out of the cars to get on the sidewalk. The so the tree, so this is, this is an illustration of what our standard is.
So as far as our lights though, let me make sure I understand. The lights are going to be close to the street? Are they going to be on which side of the sidewalk?
They will actually be on the backside of the sidewalk, uh, because we have that uh, paved area between the sidewalk and the and the cars.
Okay, because your photo shows it the other way right now.
Yeah, this is just our city standard. This isn't um,
Okay.
This isn't vermic. We couldn't, we couldn't get an updated drawing from Georgia Power between meetings. With last meeting, we had the, the layout with uh, twenty-one lights. But we don't have anything for the new new layout. It'll be similar. It's just going to be a few like less lights.
Will the lights then be in the right of way in the sense of in the twelve-foot concrete? Will they be behind the concrete? Will they be in the grass on that side, or will they be in the concrete itself?
I believe they're just behind the sidewalk. They they will be just behind the sidewalk, not in the sidewalk, but just behind it.
Okay, well, our twelve-foot path or sidewalk, I believe, is taking up the entire right-of-way. Are these lights going in the right-of-way of the city, or are they going in the uh, school property?
Yeah, there's, I think there's just a little bit of right-of-way behind the sidewalk, and they'll go right behind it.
So that there is right-of-way, or do we need an easement?
There's a, there's a little bit of right-of-way behind the sidewalk.
All right, so basically it's going in the city right-of-way, off the sidewalk just past.
Right.
Okay. Um, the cost, tell me the cost, about six hundred dollars a month?
Uh, yeah, per light, yes. And that's, actually, that was for twenty-one lights. So when we go to eighteen or nineteen, that'll come down a little bit, and that's, that's a those costs get assessed on the adjoining property owners um, throughout the city, that like with our residential lights, our commercial streetlights. Those costs get um, whatever it costs the city, that's passed through to on people's streetlight.
Well, that's kind of where my next question is going. So is the DeKalb County school system going to be paying those fees?
Yes, not, the way it's done, it's per foot. You take the whole cost of all of our commercial streetlights and divide it per foot, so they won't be paying the full six hundred dollars necessarily, but they will be contributing to that as well as all the other.
So we're passing the costs, not to the general fund, but basically to the, as much as we can to the adjoining residents.
That's right.
All right, interesting, because across the street, um, I did the research, looked at the G I S and the tax records, and I see Mr. Donald Fleming in the back. I looked at your tax records, sir. You don't pay any streetlight fees, none whatsoever. Are we going to be putting new fees on the residents of vermic to pay for these lights? Because right now, they don't pay anything.
The way it's written, uh, it's the um, adjoining property owner. So so the, that's that side of the street, so it's going to be the school system property that's going to be paying that.
Okay. All right, so in other words.
I think I'd have to go back and look, but there's there's streetlights out there now, so I believe s- the school system might already be paying uh, for the some, the streetlights that are out there are part, should be part of some existing streetlight district.
I know there's a, several streets in the city of Dunwoody that are completely dark, maybe along Brook Run Park, maybe Peeler, there's a few places. And there's no lights and there's no payment. But right now on vermic, I can tell you that the residents don't pay a streetlight fee currently. So I want to make sure that if we are putting these lights up for pedestrian purposes mainly, that we are not increasing the fees on those who are not already paying, unless it's part of a fee that was discussed and brought up and discussed with all those residents. Right now, we have not discussed any fees or impact on financial to the residents of vermic.
Right.
So I I have concerns over some of your answers. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but if the school system is going to be paying the fees, and I'm not sure they're aware of that either. All right, again, you've you've reduced this, the amount of the lights. I still think um, what's there currently, is that adequate for the street in the sense of what's the minimum standard for lighting in the city of Dunwoody? And is that currently adequate, or if not, should we be doing something else more there as well as everywhere else?
Um, yeah, I'm not, we didn't look at this, the roadway lighting itself. I think that those are typically in neighborhoods throughout the city, those lights are going to be every three to five hundred feet apart. That's not necessarily based on any actual design to see what the light levels are. That's just a typical spacing based on where the utility poles are.
And now we're going down to seventy feet, or these lights.
Well, for these pedestrian lights.
Pedestrian lights.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my whole head around this project and to see where we are and why we're doing this there. I'm not against uh, increased safety, but again, when it comes to the cost, I'm not sure of where that money is coming from and how it's being funded. And that it's uh, not overkill. So I'll defer to my other council members for more questions or clarification. Thanks.
Thank you, John. And Rob?
Uh, I guess I have question more along the idea of timing. The idea is to try to do this now because you're doing a lot of ground disturbance for the sidewalk, and it will be less expensive if we do it now versus later, is that? Or is it the idea that there's just the standard, and now that we've improved that section of a walkway, we want to bring it up to kind of what our standard is, what?
It's, yes, it's tied to the project, the being that we're putting a path there. The uh, the recommendation is to, to light the path as, you know, once we put it in.
So if, if we decide that we want to noodle on this some more, what what's the impact on the path project?
Second.
Sure.
I mean, you could wait and do it later. Um.
Would it be a different cost or similar?
No, I don't think so, because they're going to have to bore for the conduit, a lot of the conduit anyway. When we did the driveways, we went ahead and put the conduit under the driveways uh, so that you wouldn't have to worry about that later, but the rest of it, you know, you can do it now or you can do it later.
Okay, yeah, the whole reason I'm bringing this up is the, a lot of, a lot of us had different questions last time, we were missing a couple of people tonight. And could, would it be worthwhile to to wait and have a, a conversation with everybody here? I mean, I, this is my thought. So I, I'm all in favor of nice, well-lit paths, but it just seems like there's a lot. None of us saw this thing and went, great, let's do it. No questions. There was, you know, a lot of questions and discussions, and I I, if there's no reason to to make a decision today, uh, you know, is it worth waiting a couple of weeks and and having some more discussion about it? And just, just a thought.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like we can, at a later time, get the Georgia Power diagram, then we know exactly what they were, and then you could tell us that the school's paying for all of it as they do now. And maybe those would satisfy some of our questions.
I just to clarify, I'm looking at the design from the last meeting, um, we had it uh, with the schematic. And it, it looks like it is all in the, um, our right-of-way. Um, so really, what the difference would be? Um our right of way, um so really, what the difference would be, Georgia Power would give us this and take in spacing it. Every seventy feet, but it's still going to look like. That, right?
Very similar, yes, just a just a couple of less lights.
Okay. I mean. In my mind, we have to put lights on the sidewalk, so whether we do it now or that we wait two weeks, uh we have to put lights in the sidewalk.
Look, I guess the question just is what, what will those lights be and how will they look? Uh I don't think anybody is disagreeing that we want to have some lighting there, I think the question is just. What should it be?
Okay, uh so I I have a few comments on this um. You know, after our discussion at the last meeting, I think the best way to. Figure things out is to go put your eyeballs on it yourself, so I actually drove straight from the council meeting. To to uh to the high school and I parked my car and I walked the route um. And so the current situation there between Womack and Vanderlin, there are four pole-mounted streetlights. In that entire section, there's two by each, there's one by each driveway, there's one kind of in front of the high school. And there's one at the corner of Vanderlin Drive um. Now, when. Pole-mounted streetlights. Their function is to light the street, not to light pedestrian areas, and that is exactly what they're doing, it was shockingly. Dark along that stretcher road, I was actually. I don't go by there much at night, you know, but um it it was uh surprisingly. And dangerously dark along that stretcher road, I was actually surprised, um especially. As someone that lives across the street from the DeKalb County School, that is uh, you know, lit up like Times Square, so. Um so I could certainly empathize with the concerns of the neighbors living across the street from the school and and uh the impact the light can have on your. The enjoyment of your home at night, uh but there there is a solution there, as as Michael mentioned um. The the Georgia Power lights have dimmers on them, we could, we can control that on a timer. Um and we can control the the level of light and if what we start with isn't working, we can adjust that as needed. Uh that those are the lights that we currently have in Brook Run Park and that's what we do there with those lights dim at a certain time to minimize the impact uh. Uh to the neighbors, for me um. For those that don't know. My life prior to city council, I was very involved with safer routes to school, um one of the biggest things that they emphasize is lighting. Um Michael pointed out, uh for most, for a good portion of the school year, students are arriving to school at dark. And a lot of students in high school are going home in the dark too because of after school activities, sports, events, things like that. Um I, to me, this is, this isn't a question of whether or not we do it, this is a public safety issue. I know when we talk public safety, people automatically think police, fire, ambulance. But to me, public safety is also doing things to prevent the need to call the police, fire and ambulance in the first place. Um the safety issues are both physical safety uh. Uh creating, avoiding tripping hazards and other things that someone may stumble because they can't see well enough, but there's also um. Um community safety as well, uh bad guys. Are attracted to dark areas to do bad things, um and this is a high school. Um and a lot of the students at the high school um arrive early and sit in their cars um to get a parking spot. Um I I would, for the safety of those students, I would like the area lit. Um to keep them safe, just because nothing is hasn't happened yet, doesn't mean it won't. Um and I think we have a responsibility to put in the infrastructure that makes it safe for those students. And then quite honestly, the third part of the safety thing is. High school students are always. He's the smartest uh people in the world and don't always make the best decisions and uh if the area is lit up, it might uh. Dissuade them from doing things they might do in a dark area, so um to me, it's not a question of whether we do this or not. Um obviously, some other questions have been raised, if if uh John, if you said there's no. Um utility fee on those residents now, I would imagine there wouldn't be because there are. Streetlights there now that are all, all those streetlights are on the school side, but they do nothing to light um the pedestrian area, so. So with that, I know there's been a discussion whether to um. To table or not, or or to uh to remove from the agenda for a future meeting, uh what's, or or this is a business item.
Yeah, you have the right to defer since you only have five members here, if any one member would like it to defer.
Okay, uh this is also a business item, so um. We'll go down the, is there, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Okay.
We're just going to kick it down the road.
Second.
So alright, we have a motion and we have a second, moved by Stacy, second by Catherine.
My pro, I I would prefer to defer this, just one more meeting, let's, there's a few pieces of information we want to make sure we have. Um you know, I'd love to get Lynn and Joe's thoughts as well, they both were rather vocal at the last meeting. I I think we can come up with something that'll work here, I I just. To me, there's no need to, it doesn't sound like there's need to rush into it, if we can just wait two more weeks. And resolve it then.
And and Michael, that's, I mean, we, this will not uh waiting until the uh next meeting, um June tenth, I believe. That's not going to interfere with getting this completed prior to school going back in session. Or any other setback to the project.
Well, it won't hold up the construction, I don't. I don't think we'll get it in before school starts at this point because the lead time on those light poles is probably. Eight to ten weeks or something, yeah. So so the the construction can be completed, but the light poles at this point, I don't think will. Will be in by then.
Okay, if 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 approved tonight, would would those, are you confident the lights would be? In time or are we still facing the same issue of not having them in?
I guess it's possible, but I'm not, I wouldn't say I'm confident, uh Georgia Power controls that and. It seems like. It's probably going to take every bit of that time to even get the materials. Uh much less get them in.
And and the work putting those lights in, that's not. Obviously, the same as um. The the trail construction itself, it should be minimal, right, it's not going to be disruptive to the school that bad. Because all the, all the conduit should be in place, is that correct, like, we can do all the underground work and is this ma- matter of installing the poles?
Uh they're going to put in some of the conduit, but it. It shouldn't be that disruptive um. You know, they they shouldn't, they should be able to do it. Working around the school. When it's open.
Okay, um. So I I am in favor of us doing some lights, but if there are some questions that people would feel more comfortable getting answered. Is that, is that the consensus?
So Tom, here here's where I think we are, you've got a motion pending. Unless it's withdrawn or amended, you have to deal with that motion first. You do have a request under y'alls rules. By a member who can request a deferral and it says on your rules. If the mayor or a member of the city council such meaning can request a deferral and Adam can. Be the, can be deferred, so I interpret that still would require a vote, says can, then say shall. And so we need to figure out what we're dealing with, so if if there's a. A a friendly withdrawal of the primary motion, you can deal with uh Mr. Price's request. Or you gotta continue on with the motion just before you, this is the primary motion.
If I can jump in with a follow-up question, so just to follow parliamentary procedure. The motion could be withdrawn, we could then decide on mine. If mine fails, it could be reintroduced, correct?
Correct.
I just want to make sure I'm not denying.
And I've and I've tried to get y'all away from. The word deferral because it's used differently and Rob, it's not used in Robert's rules the way it is on this pad. But the deferral does allow you with five or fewer to defer, but it says. Can be deferred, which means implies to me the body still needs to vote to defer. So right now you have before you a primary motion, no amendment, you have to take it up first, if it's withdrawn, you could consider new motions if you'd like.
Okay, so let's deal with the uh the motion on the floor. Okay, it doesn't, doesn't sound like we're uh amid uh withdrawing, so we will go with the vote, all in favor, uh say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that passes three to two. Jessica, did you? Get the? Three to two.
We'll check real quick.
Okay.
I'm reading it. Okay, you've got inconsistent rules, uh I see it, so here's the rule. Uh part of being in this job is reading first and your rule section seventeen says. Under normal circumstances, passage of a motion shall require the vote of at least four council members. And must receive the affirmative vote of a majority of those voting at which a quorum is present. The vote shall be recorded in the record, but any member of the city council should have the right to request a roll call vote, such. Vote shall be recorded in the journal, except as otherwise provided in the city charter, the affirmative voted majority of the council members. Present shall be required for the adoption of any ordinance, resolution or motion. So there's a conflict in y'alls rules there. And I would tell you that uh absent, I don't have the charter, but I I can take a minute, look at the charter, see if it says anything. Normally, a majority of quorum present is enough to carry under most charters. But I found a lot of inconsistencies in Dunwoody's between that and the charters, I'll look real quick if you'll give me a minute.
Okay, thank you, and apparently we need to.
Ask more questions.
Do some work on our charter as well so that we don't run into this in the future. So like, lucky me, I got to uh. Handle this on a interesting uh Robert rules and. Day here, so uh well, is there any more discussion while while we're waiting a?
Yeah, you you do you want to, you you want to ke- keep suspend this one? Long enough to move to the next item and I'll look at this and we'll come back to it.
Yeah, if that's.
Yeah.
If that's allowed.
I think the chair can decide, we're gonna uh.
Suspense.
Spend right in place and we'll come back to it before this meeting's over.
Okay, so business item five is suspended uh pending further review. And we'll move on to our discussion items, item number six, Richard, you're up.
Good evening, player for Timon Council, I am here tonight to ask uh for. Declaration of surplus twelve uh vehicles and one trailer, uh they are older vehicles with. Over a hundred thousand miles, past useful life, uh we would, if approved, we will dispose of these via on- online. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, John?
Standard procedures, thank you, sir, I recommend consent agenda.
Just a quick question, um. Have all twelve vehicles been replaced, I know we just purchased, I mean. So are are these leaving us a deficit at all and then and when with the trailer, has that been replaced?
Uh. Yes, the trailer has been replaced and all of the vehicles have been replaced, we have plenty enough for our fleet, for our.
And yeah, so I think the consensus is consent on this, but we do as a port of order need to read the resolution into the record, so Jessica, could you handle that for us today?
Um this is a resolution to declare property surplus to provide a mechanism for the sale and disposal of surplus property and for other lawful purposes.
Any other discussion? So consent, well. Okay, great.
We're ready.
We're ready, alright.
As we've pointed out, there was an inconsistency, so the charter controls. Four council members shall constitute a quorum and shall be authorized to transact business for the city council. And blah, 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 in order for any ordinance, resolution, motion or other action, the city council be adopted, measure must receive at least. Three affirmative votes and must receive the affirmative votes of a majority of those voting. So I'll pair for, I I've read, what I've read is the exact words, but I've skipped some sentences in between. But I think a majority of quorums enough to pass.
Okay, so it sounds like item five passes uh three to two, did you get the? Record the votes? Okay, thank you, we're to our second public comment section, any public comments? Seeing none, city manager comments.
We have no comments and no need for an executive session.
City council comments.
I just want to say that this was a really nice um lesson in legislative procedure tonight, I learned some some useful things that I actually think will help us going forward, so thank you.
Uh so did I, any other comments?
And 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 I would just point out, because they're under home rule. Uh a city council and a county commission can amend their charter, but there's a process to do. And I don't think on the fly you can do it according to that process, that's why we went with the charter tonight.
Thank, thank you, Ken.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Stacy, second by Catherine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.